You need to roll.
Sure, let's go.
All you need to order. If anybody has any adjustments, I don't have anything.
The only thing I wanted to mention is that we're probably going to be, when we get to town meeting after we do the review of the warning, town meeting, special town meeting and town meeting by Australian ballot, even though they're separately listed, I have a feeling we're going to be.
Do them all together?
We're going to be discussing it.
Kind of about the same thing.
All at the same time.
Any public comment?
Well, I don't know if this is a public comment or not, but I was wondering if the procedure is to request like to have the collector of delinquent taxes come to a meeting to give us, kind of give us those protocols.
I suppose we could request him to come to the meeting.
We have, he has written a letter to the select board.
Oh, he did, okay.
Yeah, which is at the town office. I read it. He requested that only the select board read it, but it's a pretty thorough letter and it states his position very clearly. I would suggest, Monty, that if you want to talk to the collector of delinquent taxes, you should just give him a call.
Would you like to have something that's, would be on your, you know?
Well, we can request him to come. I'm willing to request him to come here. The problem is he's another elected official, so he may or may not do that.
So you think you'd come?
Yeah, I'll make a note of that. We can call him in first case scenario, but also suggest reach out if you have it.
Well, I have reached out. I'd rather get something on record.
Okay.
And I would suggest you guys read the letter at some point.
Okay, I will do that, yeah.
I didn't realize there was a down.
All right, I'll see about calling him for maybe getting on the next meeting. But I'll make no promises because if he tells us to go pee up a rope, we can do that.
Being elected official wouldn't do that.
I hope not. Hold on, we're making over here. Okay. Approving the bills.
Public comment.
Sorry, sorry, yeah, okay, yeah.
I guess I don't know an appropriate time to bring up what I gave you.
Well, since it's on the agenda, go ahead and bring this up.
This is the only time you need to bring it up.
Okay, so let me bring it up. I got a letter today I received.
This is this one?
Yes.
Okay.
And it deals with a piece of property I have in Woodbury saying that it's come to the attention of the Agency of Natural Resources that a permit was issued approximately four years ago for a septic design on Amesworth Road may be rescinded.
This is your permit or someone else's permit?
My permit.
Your permit, okay.
Correct. Based on information that they have, that there was some misleading information on my application. So I called the letter writer, Colton W. Fuller, and he has indicated to me that the petitioner says they own a spring on the property, which is an absolute lie because they do not own that spring. And part of their decision for sending that, this letter was based on that. So they have also indicated to me that there is no septic system on that property. It's a straight line from the house right to the Brook. This is right from the Agency of Natural Resources. And they are telling me that the individuals are not living there, and I'm telling them that is inaccurate. The select board has already determined that they are living there. And apparently there's been some lack of communication between the town and the Agency of Natural Resources. And as a result...
Can you tell us what that is?
Yeah, I don't think we've had any communication with them.
Have you actually talked to Colton Fuller?
No, we have not.
Okay, so, you know, with, with the intention of embarrassing the select board, I asked him if he had the objections to having the chairperson.
Paul is the chair.
Which is me today.
Which is you now, okay.
I just sent that today.
Call and speak with the individual because there's some information that should be exchanged.
Okay, because we've had no communications with Agency of Natural Resources.
And apparently that, in there lies the problem.
Well...
My question is, why would we?
The only communication that we've had is with Ryan McCall, the enforcement.
Which is jumped out, and this individual is very familiar with both those properties.
Yeah, and this is, you know, I don't really see why the town should have communicated with Colton Fuller.
Well...
For what reason?
They are saying that property is uninhabitable, and the town has said the same thing. And apparently those two, you know, one would think that the state says that the same piece of property is uninhabitable, but the town and the state would communicate. Now, I'm not saying it's your fault, but some, amongst the two, the two of, you know...
Right, we've not issued a health order and we've not issued a, nothing. That's what I'm saying. There's been no determination of uninhabitable-ness by anybody on the town end that I'm aware of.
Okay, so, that's, I guess, what I'm saying is the two need to get together and have...
And I'll call him and see what they say. Unfortunately, we don't have a health officer, so...
Okay.
Yeah, actually, the chair of the select board...
And I'm gone for the next three days, so good luck with that.
One of the key things that you should keep in mind is the petitioners for all these permits to put in water and sewer and all that, they're saying that they have a spring on their property. They have no spring on their property. The property that's located on is Tim Appleton's.
Yes.
Right.
And my understanding is Tim has indicated, or has told them, that they're not allowed to hook onto that spring because the property's been being abandoned.
That's true. Tim has made that statement to them.
So, I mean, that's...
But that would be a legal issue between Tim and that property owner.
Well, it's also A and R.
No, I got that. We can't get in the middle of a spring rights issue. That's what I'm getting at.
Okay, but I guess all I'm saying is the town needs to acknowledge the fact that it is...
Then I'll give him a call, yeah, because we don't get any of this information on sewer unless the zoning officer doesn't get any information from sewer. I don't...
No, once the permit is issued, we get a...
Okay, but I don't, I've never seen any, so it must go to the...
It goes into the land records, okay.
Well, I guess what I'm saying is there's some dishonesty going on when they're saying that they own a spring. In fact, they don't.
Sure.
And I guess in order for you to have a conversation, you'd have to have that knowledge, and I think you already do.
Well, I'm aware of it now, but I mean...
Well, that's just my hearsay. That's just me telling you that. But there's a survey that's been recorded with the town showing that spring.
Right, which I'm not aware of either.
So I guess before you call them, you should make yourself aware of it.
Okay, I can try. It's going to be a while because I'm gone a good portion of this week.
Okay, well, I just think that, because I'm in danger of having my permit revoked based on this guy lying to the state.
Yeah, well, I think if you told the state that, maybe they would go and check it out themselves.
And they've been to the property and they won't go inside. You know, we all know that issue. We all know that issue.
Have they looked at the deed and the town records on the property?
That I don't know. I can't attest to that. I don't know.
To me, it's kind of up to A and R to find out who's...
Well, I agree. I totally agree.
It sounds like an A and R issue, yeah.
Yeah, but I did tell them I would have, you know, somebody from the select board...
Yeah, I'll give him a call. It'll probably be Thursday. I'm leaving in the morning and I won't be back till, I hope, Thursday. I hope.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen.
You can come shovel snow in Watertown with me. But I'll call. I'll try to see what I can do, but it sounds like with Appleton, they've got, he's got a legal issue with this property. They've got to fight over the spring.
Is the owner of the Amesworth Road property trying to get a permit for wastewater? Is that...
Well, that's what it sounds like.
Yes.
Oh, so, and he's claiming that he has water somewhere else.
He has, the state is paying.
Somebody's hired Chase and Chase to design a septic system for the property. That's what this letter says.
He must have done that. I mean, he doesn't do that.
Yeah, that, first level aware of it, but, okay, thank you. I'll call. Any more public comment? All right. We have a motion to approve the bills of the town.
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
Any discussion?
I don't hear.
Not hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, we're good. How about the minutes?
Motion to approve? I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. You're on, Robin.
I just, um, warning all done up and posted for the special town meeting on February 12th. I have it posted by places, the town office, inside and outside, the post office, the bulletin board at the post office in the locked-in section of it. And I put it on the town hall door in that Shatney's garage. And I also double-checked with the school to make sure we were still okay to have the meeting in the school on the 12th. And Mr. Kay says we're all right with that.
Yeah, okay. That could change, go further down on the list, but...
This is true.
Now, there was, someone made a comment that it's hard to find that on the website. Is that something that we could address? I haven't looked myself.
What's that?
The, find the warning. Is it posted in a prominent, easy-to-find place?
Well, I pulled it up. When you looked at the screen, it was right dead center.
No, 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 I'm saying, is it intuitive where you would click to find it? That was a comment I made and I haven't personally looked.
It's usually right there on the homepage.
Okay, I'll go click there.
I think there's a category that says news or something, or...
There's an events and calendar.
Tom!
Well, if you look at the events portion of the banner that goes across, and if you click on the event that's posted on the website, behind that, you'll see the red. So I could take it...
Because I found it on their calendar, calendar.
Is there a way we could put like a banner that just says, "Special Town Meeting" or something?
There is one there.
I don't want to say it's easy because I can't do it, so...
It does exist.
It does exist.
Yeah, it's there. I just heard a comment that it's, "Is it intuitive where to find it?" I don't...
If it cuts off, like, as soon as you go on.
It's kind of right there, pretty much right there.
Right there.
All right. I would have clicked, but I wasn't home to click on it today.
This says Woodbury Town Meeting. It says special.
So it should say special town meeting.
Oh, that's March 4th. No, I guess I don't see the special town.
That was the comment that was made. They were hoping that when you opened the page, it would be something that was like right in your face.
Look at that.
Is that something we can fix?
Yeah, that's online, it's right there.
Just a comment that I'd heard. If it's easy to fix, let's fix it.
Oh, I see it now. It's just under calendar.
But I can't do it, so I'm not going to say it's easy.
It's doable.
Okay.
Make it special.
Someone else would have to do it. All right, keep going, Robin. I'm sorry to interrupt you.
Do you have a question?
I did. I just wondered if you said it was going to, that the special town meeting was going to be at the school or at the town hall?
At the school.
At the school.
And why aren't we having it at the town hall?
We were hoping and anticipating that there would be a lot of people there, and with the town hall, if there were a lot of people, there's not a lot of room to, people are kind of crowded too tightly together. We didn't want it to be a COVID spreader event in Woodbury. So...
In masks are required at that meeting.
Because of that, the school.
Yes.
So, yeah, that was our reasoning, Heather, is to have as much space as possible and hopefully to have as many people as possible there because it's a pretty big decision to make, and so that's the reason. Plus, it's colder than hell in the town hall. I'm glad we are leaning there tonight.
It's not the old days when you had to sit by the wood stove and burn.
And it's a little bit easier to do remote content.
Right.
Up there because there's no internet access.
Which we will have for...
So we'll have a screen and we'll have people be able to join remotely.
Right on, okay.
Ambassador's warning. It is on the event part of the...
Okay.
It is.
But I can put it on...
Yeah, you just heard the con, if you can do it easily, please.
I can put it on the calendar part as well.
Yeah, that would be awesome if you could.
Thank you.
Perfect.
Really appreciate it.
All right, continue, Robin.
And I got an email this morning from Centralmont Regional Planning Commission wanting to know if we have been updating our bridges and culvert data.
Chuck says yes.
As of December, certainly.
Okay.
Did you hear that, Chuck?
Yeah, he did. He said yes.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, you said yes. We've been updating our bridges and culverts.
That's right.
Yeah, and actually, the Regional Planning Commission is overdue to do another culvert inventory for the town.
For the town, so...
Okay, and they would like somebody to send back an email letting them know yes or no if...
Can you send me their contact information? Just email it to me and I'll respond to them.
Okay.
That Chuck said yes.
Okay. And I've had very little land recordings the last two weeks, so working on the town report with Diana and Brandy, and that's been taking up the time.
Okay. Anybody got any questions for Robin?
Is it too late to get something into the town report?
Thank you, down book. It's a book. It comes to the house. It's more finding issues.
Well, that was a question I had. The reason I sent the question through and everybody saw, by statute, we have to keep it open for 47 days prior to the meeting, which is this Thursday.
So it has to be to the printers by Friday.
Okay, so we could sign it Friday morning, correct?
Sign what?
The warning.
The warning?
Because if we, I'm just worried if a petition or some other request comes in prior to Thursday that we would be out of compliance.
Well, we need to give John and Lance to get everything together, too, before we send it in, but...
Well, I'm just going by what the statute says. That's all I'm saying. We're not to that part on it yet, but that was a question I had.
End of Friday, is that okay?
No.
Thursday.
No, it's before. It's not too late, but...
By statute, it'd have to be the end of business Thursday. That's 47 days before the meeting.
For practicality, you think you're all just...
If you can get it sooner...
I was thinking about whether the town wants something about ARCA in there.
Oh.
On the warning? I don't.
In the report, just to read.
Oh, in the report.
About what it is.
That wouldn't, that would be good, actually. Great, but yeah.
If you can get it in before Thursday, or even sooner is better.
Right.
It says right in the thing from the league, it says it's really polite if you get it in by the last select board meeting.
And that's really not part of the warning, which is what the statute is.
Right, it's just a report.
That's more for the printer and for the town report. So you'd have until Friday.
I have it to them by Friday.
Okay.
I'm not trying to be the pain.
So for those of you working on the report, what day would you, because I have a select board report that I haven't finished yet either.
They'd like it today, but the problem, that's a question for us three to answer. Are we going to approve the warning tonight? Or are we going to wait till the statutory? That's later on in the...
Yeah, the warning is separate from the town report. I mean, it's part of the town report, but...
Because we could receive a petition for the warning up until Thursday by law, is what I'm saying.
Right.
Then you might have to renew your warrant.
Correct. So it's, I'm okay with that. We'll get there. We're not on that part yet.
But, so when, when do you need reports by?
ASAP.
Okay, tomorrow.
Yesterday, realistically.
It's almost done. All right, okay. If we could have that Thursday?
Or earlier.
Yeah, I hope this is going to be, it could be just a paragraph.
Just something here and there.
Very basic, for example.
Just a short set of statements would be lovely.
Yeah, we could do that.
Because everybody in town would get it, and I would imagine that not everybody in town knows what the American Rescue Plan Act is and what the town, yeah, that would be great.
John Reed, the auditor, has to put everything, he has to basically, def, publish everything before it goes to the printer, so...
I was just surprised that it was actually in statute, but it's there.
I never knew that either.
Yeah, I didn't either. Someone, I looked it up and that's what it says, 47 days.
Forty-seven days.
Forty-seven, so I counted back forty-seven. It's Thursday. The reason I brought up is because Callis had in their report form that their stuff is all due, no later than the end of business on Thursday, and that's, because that's the statutory deadline, so I looked it up. Okay.
Town caucus or pre-town meeting?
That's later on in the warning.
That isn't later than that.
Yeah, we're going to be going into that. You got more, Robin?
No, that's it.
Okay, we did Robin's questions. All right, treasurer's report.
Yep. Over the last two weeks, payroll totaling $8,853.59. A cap payable, $71,892.15. Incoming for cash receipts, $2,011.20. Detailing land recording, marriage license, copies, zoning permit. Delinquent taxes over the last two weeks, $2,259.35. Transfers in from the state for the highway for class two and three roads, $18,024.84. And traffic fines of $76.79. As far as transfers from the money market over into the checking, it totaled $61,000 that I transferred to pay recover for bills. Knocking at the door is W. Two's, so my plan is to get those out by Thursday. And I was, and then I have surgery lined up for next Wednesday that I'll be out for at least four weeks. And my laptop is being finished, putting emails and other goodies on there so I can work from home.
So will you be doing your work or be completely out?
It's my right hand.
I just went through that with my left hand. Nine weeks in the cast, it was great.
We'll see. There's a lot of steps I have to, before even surgery comes.
You had a nice scar like this.
So, yeah, I've lined up Tom for...
So you have a replacement, okay.
Yes. But I'll be able to do transfers at home. I can get on there if he needs assistance.
When does this start again?
My surgery is on the 19th.
Of this month, okay.
Next Wednesday.
And you said for how many weeks?
They're saying I'll be on a sling for six. I start PT after two.
You're going to get a cast?
No, no cast.
You'll really enjoy that. Casts are awesome.
Questions?
I don't have any. Anybody got a question for Brandy?
Good luck.
Good luck, Brandy.
Yeah, hoping he was good for you. I'm glad you don't have to get a cast. They're not much fun. Okay. Highway.
Yes, so I have on the agenda David Upson, and I assume that's you.
That's who's in the corner, because I didn't recognize. I'm Paul.
Hi, Paul.
Chris and select member, and Michael. So...
Hey, Chuck.
Hey, how you doing?
What's the temperature down there? Did anybody ask you that yet?
No, it was 82 today.
Oh, man, that's terrible.
That's why we didn't ask.
Shall we tell him what the temperature is up here?
Four.
I don't want to say.
It's four.
I'm going to move up here so he can hear me.
So...
40 degrees?
Something in that neighborhood.
David is the new Hardwick Town Manager, and he sent us a letter about our mutual agreement that we have, town-highway mutual agreement, which is basically the town of Hardwick plows the roads up in West Woodbury in the wintertime and a small section of a road going into Nichols Pond, which is actually a Hardwick road, but they do plow a little bit of the Woodbury road to the turnaround. And I guess, I think the mutual aid agreement was a verbal one. It was done back in the days of Larry, boy, Harry Daly as a road foreman. So I think, I'm not sure what David is looking for, and he can explain it a little bit better. I had a conversation with him and Chuck did also. I think we're just trying to relook at this agreement that we have and maybe establish a new one that would actually be written down somewhere. That's kind of my impression. But David, I'll give you the, I'll give you the floor.
And I just want to add to that, just make the agreement more equitable for both towns. So this all came up when the driver for that route came to me and winter was coming, and he said that there's a house up on West Woodbury that he's concerned about hitting something because of the road narrows there and there's all sorts of debris. There's a refrigerator next to the road, and he said, "Well, I don't want to be liable for that." And then something came up, "Why are we plowing roads in Woodbury?" And then, so then that's how this happened. So if there was a complaint up there from my driver, I have no recourse with those people, with the people of...
And there have been complaints in the past.
Right. So that is, that's your, they would have to come to you. So I just want to, you know, there's that piece. And then I started looking at the financial end of things, and I talked to Tom Fadden, our road foreman, and we came up with some numbers which I, which I sent to you guys. Those were rough numbers, conservative in some places, and estimates in others. I used the FEMA rate for the truck. That's no driver, so that's what we built for a truck for in-kind payment for matching, grant matching. And then I used the overtime rate, two-thirds of the overtime rate for a driver and one-third of the straight time, because most of the plowing that's done in the wintertime is on overtime. So that's where I came up with those numbers. And then I guess this past summer, I wasn't the town manager yet, but this past summer was a day of hauling, I think it was between 12 and 15 loads of gravel for Kate Brook Road in Hardwick totaling $2,800. $2,891.25. And then I took the same truck rate of $65 an hour, and then I think I used $25 an hour for the man-hours. I could be a little off on that, but basically the rough estimate was, we're like 11.5, and you guys last year were 3,600, just roughly.
Because we hadn't hauled any sand, right? Because that was originally...
No, that, what we did last summer was unusual. Usually we'd spend, have two road crew members spend a week helping haul the winter sand, so it's usually probably a little bit more equitable. And we use the V-Trans equipment rates, which are quite a bit more than the FEMA rates, so...
But all in all, it would still come out.
It's still...
So I could use the V-Trans rates for my...
Yeah, we'd still be out of balance.
Yeah, we'd still be out of bounds, yeah.
Yeah, well, in, oh, no respect, this year we had quite a ton getting Tommy to lock into what he wanted to do.
Yeah.
We thought we were all sand. He had so much going on that we ended up hauling gravel, and he said he was happy. And he and Greg had been working it out, so I let it go with that.
Yeah.
But we were after Tom for about six weeks, and I'm not putting him down or anything. He had a lot going on, just like we did. So that's how some of that happened.
Yep.
I guess that's all I got to say on that part.
You know, there's, you know, hauling sand in the summer, there's no plow on a truck. You're hauling pretty much on flat rural roads. You know, you're not beating on equipment, so just putting that out there.
Well, how should we proceed then, David? How would you like to proceed on this?
Well, there's a couple different ways that I was thinking. We can assume the road maintenance, and you guys can, we can come up with an annual cost. We can throw in, we can throw in a grader run or two with chloride up there. So when we run Kate Brook, we'll do West Woodbury as well. So you guys don't have to run the grader all the way around. That's up to you. And we can come up with, you know, crunch the numbers and come up with just a flat rate each year where you pay the town in Hardwick.
Or are we going to take over the plowing again?
Or you can take over the plow. Or, or we can, I mean, I'm really not too keen on the horse trading that's been going on.
Okay.
With liability, with just the way the world is right now.
Sure.
So you can...
So my thought with this is we put a third road crew person on. Is it, Chuck, is it possible for us to just simply take over the plowing of that again?
Anything's possible. I mean, they just need two men.
Right, because that certainly makes it a whole lot easier for everybody.
Can I just ask a question?
Yeah.
So if you bill us or you horse, if you trade labor for labor, either way, you're still liable. So, I mean, it wouldn't matter if we paid you, you're going to be liable. Or if we trade labor for it, you're still liable.
Yeah. The liability piece isn't really the driving factor here. It's the inequity.
Well, I understand, yeah. But it would make sense to have something on paper saying, all right, so at the end of the day or end of the year, we put in $11,500 or whatever it was, $11,500, and we got to come up with that much to support you. I mean, I think if you had something in writing that says that...
Yeah, that's what I'd be saying.
I mean, for the town to put a budget item on it, I would rather not see that, in my opinion.
The, the only, the only question I have is when your truck comes around to do West Woodbury Mountain and our driver hasn't made it because he's doing the bus routes and he hasn't done Cape Brook, what kind of, what problem is that gonna be?
But see, this agreement was only seven or eight years ago-ish, so they always did it prior to that.
Well, it's been at least, it's been more than eight years because it was already in effect when I, when I came on.
Either ten.
But just barely, I think, I don't know, Monty, you were probably on the select board.
Yeah, I've been on, yeah. Been quite a while, I'd say, more like 15. But I would think if, if our truck goes around, checks the road and it hasn't been plowed, that we should plow it.
Plow, right.
But see, that's a, did the bus go up there?
That's not a bus route.
We wouldn't, it'd probably be the very last road to get done.
It would be.
That our guys do it. Because I know the old days, why they did this, they were having to take the chains off the truck, drive around to Cape Brook, put the chains back on, plow the road, come back down, take the chains off, drive back to Woodbury, put the chains back on. Now, do they run chains on the LoPro or could we send the LoPro up there to do that road?
Well, they run chains on it, it's a six-wheel drive truck. Depends on the situation, with glitter ice, I would think.
Run chains, yeah, so they'd have to put them on.
And the people up in West Woodbury always used to complain during the last month.
Putting that 4,900 downtown to gravel's, getting the sand air, going up, plowing sand and bringing it back to gravel's, coming back to Woodbury.
Well, maybe we should think about, we don't have to make a decision tonight.
We don't have to decide tonight, okay.
Of course not. And you're set for, I mean, this, this is the way it's going for this winter.
Okay.
And, you know, nothing's.
But moving forward, I agree with you, we do need to resolve it, it's inequitable and whatever gets done, we either go, might we either go back to doing it ourselves or we'll do it in writing and there would be a, right, I mean.
One other thing, I think I mentioned it to you Dave, maybe we could hone Cape Brook for you.
Yep, yep, we can talk about that too, that's a great, that's a great idea. Yep.
You know, we kept your road honed up in the summertime and then you plowed the whole thing in the wintertime.
Yep.
And we can do the same thing with Nichols Pond Road, where we're up there, we could hone that.
Nichols Pond Road isn't really that much of a concern.
Because it's so small.
There's one resident out there and we need to, there's a spot to turn around in Woodbury, so that wasn't a huge concern of mine. I, I know that there's a, there's a business out there that they would like to see that plowed and we would be more than willing to do that if it was brought up to snuff.
Yeah, well, we, the select board and I have talked about that, we're definitely gonna do something with the road in the spring, so.
Yeah, yeah.
So Chuck, it would almost seem that it would be better for you and Greg to work with David here to come up with either saying, hey, we're gonna take it all back over or come up with the agreement that, of which we would put in writing and then present that to us instead of us trying to get in the middle of it.
Well, for one thing, if we take it back over, if we take plow back over, we're gonna have a problem with Greg.
Well, that could be. But that's why I hate to dictate to you, I'd rather you guys, if you can figure it out, wouldn't it make the most sense?
It would, like I say, I would be more interested in maybe honing Cape Brook, Cape Brook in shape for you guys and.
So if we leave it that in the next month or so, could you guys get together and work it out?
We can, yeah, I'll talk to Greg and I'll get a hold of Dave if that's all right, Dave.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely.
So we'll, we'll.
Thanks.
Go ahead.
I think we should try to figure out what we use for yardage for sand up there and Woodbury should pay for the sand.
Yeah. So I'll leave it up to you guys and maybe in a month I'll put you on the first February meeting, is that enough time or you want two months?
Oh, the split in half takes six weeks.
Okay, middle of February meeting.
Fair enough.
Or maybe, yeah.
But just make sure you've got it down on a piece of paper of what you guys wanna do, that, I think it's easier than us trying to say, hey, you're gonna do this and we're gonna tell them that and they're not happy about it and.
I can report, I can send you another letter if you want, based on the, our meeting.
Okay.
Or Chuck, we can come to an agreement and Chuck can report back to you guys, however you wanna do it. You're the boss here.
With Chuck and Greg.
With Chuck and Greg.
Get it to us, once you guys have come to terms and then we'll more than likely agree with what you agree with.
Okay.
You go.
Maybe we should get Tommy in on it a little bit, too.
Yep, yeah, absolutely.
See, Joe was doing it.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, because then we aren't in the middle of it. But we would need to eventually, but it's just.
Not yet.
If we say do it this way and then they don't like it and this.
By the way things out of this winter, by spring, we certainly should be able to have it straightened out.
Yep.
Yep.
Yeah.
All right, I'm happy.
Perfect.
Okay.
You good? I don't wanna take up any more time.
Okay.
Thank you for.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for bringing it up, yeah. And this is, this is great civic engagement here, I wish we could get this many people at our town, our.
Just get something controversial going, you'll get people there.
Just make a brief comment.
Tell them you're gonna buy it, whatever.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See David. All right, you got anything else Chuck, more on your report?
Uh, I've had a little correspondence with Patrick up on the King family, yeah. He's looking for more signs.
I, I had a conversation with him too Chuck.
That is one headed boy right there.
Right.
I think our decision was no signs, correct?
Uh, yeah.
It was, their decision was no speed bumps or, or drainage ditches. Signs, we already put signs up there saying 15 miles an hour and respect the landlord.
Okay, so it seems like we've done what we were gonna do.
And that's.
We've definitely done all the, we said we were gonna do it and that's it.
Okay.
I pretty much told him the same thing, there wasn't really anything more that we could do.
That's what I pretty much told him the other day, he wanted me to call him and he sent me an email, I mean, a text back, said he didn't need to talk right now, so I don't know if he got the message or not. Other than that, we talked about last week, there was a grant around for fixing blacktop and patching holes and stuff.
Yeah.
You remember that?
Yep.
Okay. To fix the holes and seal it on South Woodbury and Cabot Road, it's gonna be between eight and $10,000.
Okay.
And I think that grant was for $10,000.
See, it was, the grant, it can be for quite a bit, it depends on the project. So that's not a problem and I think the town pays 10%, that's our match for that paving grant. So we have, I think we have $17,000 in our paving fund at the moment, last time, that's what my memory is telling me right at the moment.
Well, the, uh, the holes in the apron at the end of Town Farm Road, I'm working on them with the state, if we don't get anywhere with them, that's actually their responsibility, but I'm not getting anywhere with them. We need to do something there, somebody's gonna tear front end of that one.
Well, those, those projects, the paving grants only apply to Class Two Town Highways, which we have two of them, the Cabot Road and Foster Hill Road.
Right. Right, but I'm, we need to do something with these.
Yep.
Okay.
So if we got a quote on that, we do have some money in the paving fund, we could fix that if the state doesn't do it.
All right. I probably won't work on that for a while, but I'll put it on the list for.
Okay.
We may have to get permission from the state to do that.
To do that. Yeah, they tried that with me, the apron that they put in, they tried to say wasn't done correctly, want us to pay for it and I just explained to them we're replacing what's there and that's how that went.
Yeah, okay, well.
Suddenly we got the permit.
Well, speaking of done properly, I don't know how they can say that South Woodbury entrance on the 4th was done properly the way they left that.
Not properly.
Chuck just got small.
He did get small.
There you go, he's back big again.
Okay, good.
I guess that's about all I have for the road.
Okay, I, I put a couple of things on the agenda. One, yeah, one is, I just wanted to mention that the equipment grant that we've been talking about for the roller, for, for road grading, right now that grant is on hold. They had quite a number of people that responded to it, so, and more, you know, more people asking for more money than they have, so it's gonna get looked at again in the spring, so right now that's on hold. And then I wanted to bring up the bicycle safety signs that we talked about, I think it was last spring. Last spring, yeah.
I think it was, it was August, I think it was.
I can't remember when, it was a while ago.
August, okay.
All right. So we, at the time, the select board approved these safety signs and then the road crew felt that the signs were illegal. I sent an email to V-Trans asking them about it and Shauna Clifford forwarded the email to somebody in V-Trans, I can't remember who it was and, and never really heard back from him and then I kind of forgot about it. And then Skip asked what's going on with it, Skip Lindsay, and I rechecked with Shauna, she resent the email, still didn't get a response, so Skip did his own research into the matter and sent us an email, I believe I sent it on to everybody. But basically, the sign, the sign that the Planning Commission selected is an approved sign and according to the research that Skip did, there's nothing illegal about them at all as long as they're placed in the town highway right of way. So kind of hoping that, that this is pretty much cleared up and that the road crew could do that next summer sometime.
Yeah, yeah, as long as it's cleared up and everybody's happy, I will, does anybody have a picture of the sign?
Yes, I, I can send that to you, I think, yeah, I can send that to you, I could probably find the original email that the Planning Commission sent everybody, that does have the sign on it.
I can send it to you.
Okay, all right.
Skip's gonna send it.
Skip Lindsay's gonna send it to you.
All right, you can send it to me and I'll get the signs made up so that this spring when we're getting ready to do the roadwork, we'll put them up.
Okay, go ahead.
He was, Chuck, you were part of the original email I sent back on January 5th.
I can hear you, Skip.
So you were in the original email, so you probably have it already. From Skip?
Yep, all right, I'll look.
Because I did see the pictures of it.
Might be best, send it to him again. Sometimes it's hard to find stuff.
Yeah, for me it is.
Yeah, me too.
Depends on the position my wife is.
Right. Okay, so looks like we're good with that.
All right, I'll get them made up.
Okay. So that was it on, on the, you know, things that I.
That's all you have, anybody got any questions for Chuck? Okay.
This is probably a moot question, but where does money come for bicycle signs out of our budgets?
Come out of our sign budget.
Sort of, there's, there's signs in the highway budget, yeah. It's not a lot, it's like $840, I think.
All right, so we'll move on to town meeting warning.
All right. So I had, I had some comments and questions about the warning, just for editing. I have, I have a copy that I printed out.
Oh, okay.
I'll take it, thanks, Mr. G. Thanks, miss. So just a couple of editing things, in Article One, I'm wondering if everything could be consistent, like with the select board member, one year remaining on a three-year term, instead of having the one written out, it would just be the number one like all of the other, other ones that are listed there. It's just a simple editing thing, but, and I'm fine with it the way it is too, but it just, it just kind of stuck out to me that it was a little inconsistent that way. And then the English teacher in me wonders, under Article Two, the part for $200 to Salvation Farms provides fresh vegetables to Vermont Farms, I don't, does a comma need to be there?
Is that a Oxford comma?
That's just the English teacher in me. So.
If you don't, if you don't make any changes on the second page, you can.
Well, actually, the second page I have, have more commas. So Article Seven, is there another way of saying modified cash basis financial statements that people will understand?
I took that from the proposal that came from the company, the audit company, because I was looking for something more to say than just audit. So that's what they made the proposal on, so.
Well, I mean, they probably know what that means, but.
Yeah, but.
That's how we run, that's how we run our accounting, is on a modified cash.
Okay.
Okay.
So legally, it's probably best to have that.
Probably, good thing to say.
All right, okay, so that's. And then with the Article Eight, for the appropriation, for the funding for the cemetery, cemeteries in town, I was wondering if we, you know, part of the plan is to hire Sexton, who would oversee the different cleaning and repairing of the monuments and. Would that, should that be mentioned in there? Does it make it too complicated?
Well, because yeah, well, I think it's a, because if we're, it sounds like Sexton's gonna be a contractor.
Right. So it's just the money.
It's just a money article, really.
Okay, all right.
Should be in the cemetery commission's report.
Okay, all right, so that was that question and then.
We're actually hiring an employee for the town, I think we put it in there.
So then the, the last two articles, just, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead Chuck.
I just want to break in, tell Skip that I've got that sign.
He found it. She found it, I'll be accurate.
Ain't Karen for us?
Yeah.
All right, I think that one is, back out of here if you guys are all set.
Hey, go sit on your porch for me in your shorts.
That's exactly what I'm seeking.
Thank you.
See you Chuck.
See you Chuck.
Bye Chuck, bye.
Bye.
Bye. So, and then just the last two articles, should, should they be nine and 10?
Yep.
Yeah.
And that's, that's it for me on there, I don't know if it says anything. I'll say goodbye to Chuck here. Let's see.
Who's the bald guy with, oh, it's me.
Looking sharp, me.
So.
Good night Chuck.
Our Salvation Farms, last year was the first year that we funded them, so that's why that line was in there, it doesn't really have to be in there at all this year. The other, none of the other appropriations have explanation, so maybe I should just take that sentence out. What do you think?
Gooder than the way it is.
Yeah.
Minus comma, of course.
Oh yeah, I'm happy to leave it, yeah, happy to leave it.
We've gotta get our comma rules out.
Right, the comma can stay there too.
So I go back to my other question, do we hold this till Thursday? I'll abide by what the other two wanna do.
Well, my thought is we could approve it tonight and then if there is something that comes up last minute, then we would just have to meet again.
As long as you're willing to change it, I just don't wanna tell somebody if they do something that.
Right.
I'm fine with that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm willing to change it if somebody has a.
I'd rather amend, I'd rather vote on it and amend it later.
Okay, so somebody make a motion.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
With, excuse me.
With the proviso.
With corrections.
But should we also, with the proviso, we'll add something if it comes in before? But should we also, with the proviso, will add something if it comes in before Thursday, end of the day, Thursday?
We have to, right?
You have to by statute, that's my problem, that's what statute says.
So motion to tentatively approve with corrections pending revisions by Thursday at.
End of business.
Five P M.
Well, the, the uh, the reason it's rushed is because of the town and we're ever to go to the.
Yeah, no, no, I got it, I'm, I fully understand, I just don't wanna be against statute.
There's something that might come in, like if the fire department decides.
Yeah, I don't know, probably not. It may be coming, but it's not gonna make it for town meeting day, I don't think.
Um I'll second.
Okay, we got a new motion in a second, if I guys have any discussion.
I am comfortable with that approach.
Comfortable with it, too.
Me too.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody, are we all voted yes, like?
So I'll make those changes and if you wanna stop by sometime during the week and ask to sign it, that would be nice, but it's not really necessary because. The signatures won't go in the town report.
Right, right.
So we'll say, I'll say approved as of end of business Thursday.
So would it be there to be signed by Thursday or Wednesday?
Tomorrow, okay. I have to work tomorrow, Rob is going to.
Okay.
Alright, pre-town meeting, I guess it's town meeting update first.
Yeah, so um. Where I have, it's here somewhere, oh, so yeah, so.
The Senate's working.
Yeah, there's a, the latest word from um the Senate, um they passed this, I guess it hasn't gone to the House yet, is um.
Yeah, it has, it has.
Okay.
So it's in, over at the House.
It's totally approved.
Okay.
Oh, it is passed, just not signed by the governor yet, probably, okay.
So um and it basically gives towns the um. Right to um have Australian ballot um for the town meeting, um any of the uh voting. Um and we could also postpone our meeting if, if we wish to, um. So I'm trying to.
Yeah, there were a few last year who actually postponed their meeting till spring and they got tense and stuff like that, I don't think.
Yeah, I don't think we're gonna do it, well, technically, we can't do it yet until the governor signs it.
Right. I'd rather go forward with our approach as best as we can.
With a live meeting or an Australian ballot meeting?
Australian ballot meeting.
Yeah, no, that, that would be.
That's what I would prefer to do.
That would be my recommendation too, yeah.
And this was no mail-in ballots, correct, it's just Australian ballot.
Postcards.
Postcards, I'm fine with, but.
We do postcards.
People would request, but I think we can't technically do it until, is the bill complete, is the.
We're not gonna, we don't have to deal with this until after we're done with the town report.
Okay, so we could do it at the next meeting.
Well, maybe not till.
Well, the question's gonna be the meeting on the twelfth.
Yeah, and there is wording in this, I was thinking, well, maybe we could just have on the warning, the um. Articles that are, will be um on the special town meeting, but the last provision here.
Yeah, I don't think we can do that.
We can't do that, so the provisions of seventeen V S A two, twenty-six eighty, uh parentheses E shall apply to any municipality that votes. To hold a twenty-twenty-two annual municipal meeting by Australian ballot pursuant to subsection A of this section. A municipality shall not warn any question on whether the municipality shall adopt the Australian ballot method of voting on a permanent basis. For any or all articles for any subsequent municipal election, so we couldn't do that.
On the town meeting day, but I'm saying, we have already warned one.
Yes, no, no, that's what I'm saying, I was thinking, maybe we could do.
Yeah, we can't.
We could just put it on the warning, but we can't, we can't, so we still have to do the special town.
So the question would be, do we wanna move both meetings to Australian ballot, in my mind? One of the problems is our town moderator doesn't wanna moderate the meeting, there's a bunch of people that are concerned.
I think the town moderator would be less concerned if everyone at that meeting, the special town meeting was wearing a mask.
We can't necessarily grantee that.
Um well, we're sort of, because we're using the school gym, we sort of.
We sort of have to, sort of have to.
Again, go back to my question, how do you provide access to someone to the meeting if they.
We would have remote access, so if a person has an issue with wearing a mask, they would have to um access it.
Then my question, if we do one Australian, why wouldn't we do both?
You already weren't an open meeting.
No, I got it, I'm just asking the question.
Well, that's um to me, and actually, maybe I just have a question for Monty, Monty um.
You submitted this, what is your opinion?
So, yeah, I mean, I assume that the reason that you submitted this is, you know, from last year when we did do Australian ballot. Obviously, we had a lot more people that had a say in, in what happened, which is a good thing, um. So my, you know, one of the concerns I have about the special town meeting is that there are probably gonna be a lot of people that just don't wanna be there. Because it's an in-person meeting, so.
I'm gonna be out of town that weekend, too.
So we're gonna be voting on Australian ballot, which allows more people to vote and there may be just a handful of people there that make the decision, which kind of is counter to what the. What we're meeting there for, and that's just the situation, it's not, I'm.
I mean, ideally, if, I would like to see the discussion.
Yeah.
But um it's kinda like town meeting, there's only a few people that go to that and they decide, that's kinda.
Well, we, we've had well over a hundred people at our town meetings, but not, not compared to three, the three hundred people.
Usually it's a hundred, hundred and twenty, somewhere.
Yeah, yeah, so we usually have a pretty good turnout, um so, you know.
Or if you had a hybrid.
Well, that's, that's the plan, is um, and I have, that's part of the.
I don't know how you're gonna vote with a hybrid meeting, though. If you had forty people on the screen, how are you gonna vote?
Well, there is a way for people to raise their hand, there is a way for, that they could do that.
But you can't see forty people, that's been my experience, like a ten people meeting's easy, but you get, I was in one this weekend for thirty people and. You can't, somebody leaves their mic on and the thing feeds back and makes all kinds of weird noise and.
Yeah, I think we would just have to deal, I mean, we would just have to deal with that situation as best we can, um hopefully, we would have somebody. Uh kind of monitoring the um, the laptop is probably what we're gonna be using, um yeah, that's the only way we're gonna do it. Yeah, um and I, I, you know, I do have remote access, I'll talk some more about that, but that. If we, you know, we're gonna have the special town meeting, um there's no way that we can't.
Right, we have to have, yeah.
We have to have it.
Okay, Diana had something.
I did a little research today to find out whether um it would be possible to go back to uh to. Basically postpone the meeting, take the sixty days you can take to do the announcement of the warning and then the thirty days. But by that time, we'd be in the spring and we could go down to the town hall and have the windows open and people might be more likely to come. Because like Monty said at the last meeting, it's an important issue and it should be discussed, that's, I think that's why the legislature put that. In what they did for the, but that only applies to the annual meeting, so that's another possibility and uh. I talked with an attorney at the Secretary of State's office and he thought that was a possibility to just put it off. Resend the war, you know, cancel the warning.
It's like more can't rescind it.
Why?
It's like more can't rescind it.
Well, they can post, they.
No, not now, can't.
Well, we could check with the Secretary of State's office.
Who did you talk to?
Uh Jenny Poser.
Oh, that is.
Uh huh.
She works for the Secretary of State's office.
Mm-hmm.
Um I mean, we're, we're gonna be voting by Australian ballot this year anyway, um I, I would. Like to make an inquiry of the Secretary of State's office, um.
Cause we can only delay it to the end of the third week in March.
That's the latest we could possibly get.
I'm not clear once we've worn to a meeting that we can cancel it.
Alright, I really don't think.
Okay, I'll send you the email I got from J P Isabel and uh.
Okay.
There is something in the statute that says you can't, oh, you can't cancel a one meeting, but you can maybe reschedule it.
Well, let's, we'll just check that out, Monty, and otherwise, let's plan on having it be on February twelfth as it's been.
As it's been warned.
Yeah, in the school, and we'll just, you know, try to get the best remote access setup that we can have, um so that those people. Also have an opportunity to voice their opinion and also vote, um.
I also. An idea, I was gonna ask Steve and I haven't uh yet, but whether it would be possible to have an open meeting, have a ballot box. Have a little handwritten ballot like we do sometimes, a paper ballot and allow people, if they've already made up their minds, to come in. Put their, check in, put their ballot in the box and leave and not have to hang around.
I don't think you can do that, it's either gonna be a.
Well, that's what I'm asking, it's.
Cause again, you'd have.
Because we do have paper ballots at.
Right, but someone on the floor has to request a paper ballot and then everyone votes on it, you gotta do it one way or the other.
Right.
Well, we could just make that a, you know, a.
Yeah.
Formality, just, that's the intention, is to say, bring it to a paper.
But again, see, you're governed, this is, you're governed by Robert's Rules of Order, someone has to make the motion and then it has to be passed.
That could happen.
We have to say, he did that early.
Yeah.
That's not gonna help people that don't attend.
Hmm?
That's not gonna help, that will not help people that are.
Well, it'll.
Okay, here's what it says, the Select Board may cancel a special town meeting called by them. The Select Board may not cancel a special meeting that has been called upon a petition of five percent of the voters unless the voter. Who withdraws his or her name from the petition prior to the warning being. Signed by the majority of the Select Board drops the percentage below the five percent, so we can't cancel the meeting.
Okay.
That's what the statute says.
Alright, okay.
You may be able to reschedule it.
It's already been warned.
Right, it has been warned.
That would be canceling.
Yeah, we'll look into it, and, but I think we should just plan on having the meeting and if there is some way that um.
And if, and if the chair is not gonna be here and the moderator is uh not gonna.
Cause I'm gonna be in Pittsburgh for two days.
If, if the, I think, um and I can't, I'm not gonna speak for Steve, but um his concern was that there will be people there. That are not wearing masks and, you know, he's sixty-eight years old and he doesn't want to, and people will be talking, of course, um. Discussing this, you know, he doesn't wanna put himself at risk, um which is totally understandable the way things are right now, um. So uh.
A lot of people who would, would not come for that.
And a lot of people will not come, um that's why it's key that we have some kind of remote access, um. To help with that and, and you know, we could require that people wear masks, we could ask our town constable to be at the top of the stairs, um and then if. And let people know if they, if they have an issue with wearing a mask, that they have the opportunity to attend the meeting remotely, um.
Do you have a constable?
We do.
Oh, we do, yeah, we do, actually.
Yeah, we do.
Who's that?
Gary Clark, Gary Clark.
Really?
Yeah, no.
Well, I won't have any part, denying any, I just gotta, I'm up to my eyeballs in public meeting.
Right.
Issues, I just got a complaint filed against me by someone who claimed I did a violation of one, so I, I, I don't wanna with, just for me, cause I.
Right.
Not clear you could deny someone's personal access to the venue.
Right, I'm not clear either.
Cause I think our, our choice is hold a meeting that everyone can come to, or we go to Australian ballot, that's what the law provides for.
Then we can't use the Woodbury Gym.
So you can't go to Australia.
No, I got that, that's what I'm saying, you, you see my uncomfortable level?
Yeah, I got you.
Cause I don't wanna say we hold a meeting and someone then files a public meeting complaint, saying I tried to get in, but they wouldn't let me in because I didn't have a mask.
So we do have the op, option of making this decision at, on the special town meeting day by Australian ballot, if we want.
We could.
We could.
Yes, Michael.
I guess the question I have is, that's already been warned.
As a regular meeting.
Yeah, regular meeting.
My understanding is, it doesn't say, and believe me, I'm in favor of the mask thing.
Yep.
But it doesn't say anything in there about mask will be required, I think it would have to be in the warning, wouldn't it?
Uh, no.
Well, I, I go back into the open meeting law, the, the state's very specific on the open meeting law. That's all, and I just, I don't wanna be the guy standing at the door saying, you can't come in, and someone says, wait a minute, you're violating my rights.
Right.
How much of a right does, but how much is, how much authority does a school have to make that?
We're using school facilities.
Well, they can request you, there's no law, you can't arrest somebody and throw them off the property and you can't send them to jail for not, that's my point with the whole mask thing.
Right.
Wherever you live on the mass spectrum, that, that's been my problem with it all along, it's just when someone says it's mandatory. Do you have them arrested, do you, that's why I just don't know the answer to that question. I'm okay with an in-person or Australian ballot, I'm just saying, you gotta do one or the other, what I don't wanna, in me, I don't wanna be in a position where we're trying to count forty votes on the screen. Where someone might not get counted, for example, you get another problem.
If there were a state emergency, that'd be one thing.
Right.
Cause what, what we do have, in my view, is we either say we go to Australian ballot based on the law that the legislature passed, or. We do a meeting, which you can attend and vote, and if someone moves to go to a paper ballot at that meeting, you would.
But you can still get absentee ballot, correct?
No, not in a live meeting, not in a, that's why, we gotta do one or the other, we can't mix and match, right, that's what's.
Australian ballot, you can do absentee.
Absentee ballot with Australian ballot, right. Now, the other alternative is you go to uh Australian ballot, but then you have a pre-meeting, like we're gonna with the town meeting.
Mm-hmm.
That's the other choice, I guess, I don't wanna get into a muddled.
Yeah.
Where we're trying to, cause I think we'll just get ourselves in a corner.
It's gonna get messy so fast.
Right, it just gets really unwieldy.
Yeah.
Just having been to some very large meetings where people voted, it gets very difficult, you have more than four or eight, ten people.
And that might be the better way of doing it, have a pre-special meeting, meeting, then if you don't need a moderator.
Right, and you, the public meeting law is met, you know, there's no, the vote isn't happening.
Then you do Australian ballot, I mean, that might be an option.
We'll just have it be done before the twelfth.
Right.
You don't have to have a moderator at the pre.
Well, you, you should.
We usually do.
Usually we do.
Right, it's, it's more of an informational meeting, my reference would have a moderator of some kind.
And if, if we did have remote access also, the moderator could um.
Right, that one's easy, cause you're not voting, cause my fear is the vote gets messed up because someone didn't get counted or we overcount, I don't know.
Okay.
Voting by um compute.
Oh, I got, uh, my headset's still.
I don't think that's even legal.
No, I think you have to physically be in attendance to vote at the meeting.
So now that we've worn the meeting on the twelfth, would that be when the informational meeting?
No, that's when we would have the vote, if, if you went to Australian ballot, we would be voting on the, on the twelfth of February.
So we have to work really fast to get out a postcard or something to everybody so that they could.
So we should make a decision tonight.
We should make a decision tonight, I think we should make a decision on both the meetings.
Okay, oh yeah, I mean, I, I think that um for the special town meeting, I, I think. In order to give everyone a chance to have a say, by, I think we should do Australian ballot and have um. An informational meeting um beforehand, um. I mean, that's my.
That's your motion?
That's not a motion, it's just, that's my opinion.
The chair can't make a motion.
Right, I mean, I, if we're, if we're close to agreement, then I can make it.
I think we are. Are you good with that?
Where would you have the meeting beforehand?
In the town hall.
Probably in the town hall.
I'd have to go to the town hall.
Yeah.
I don't think that we could pull that off with the school beforehand.
Yeah.
Do you do that like a Saturday before meeting?
We could.
Yeah, the Saturday before would be good, I mean, we, we chose the Saturday for the special town meeting to.
Hoping that's attendance we could, yeah, so, yeah.
Still have the, the voting would be.
Sa- Saturday, the twelfth.
Saturday, twelfth.
You could start at ten A M and go to five, whatever you normally do.
Absentee ballots could be.
That would be the next question, what would the hours be, cause normally it's Australian ballot's like, what, seven to seven?
It's usually, well, ten to seven.
That I don't think is addressed in statute, so we can just decide.
Federal election, we do seven to seven. But we could do ten to seven.
We could do ten to seven.
And that would be on Saturday, the twelfth.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I'm just trying to avoid grenades that we're gonna step on or landmines.
And are, are there any restrictions on this informational meeting that wasn't on the warning originally, is that a problem?
We send out a postcard to everybody, we can explain that and explain that they can request a ballot, you know, explain.
How to, it's a standard absentee ballot.
Should we do a check-in with some state authority to make sure that we haven't done something that we shouldn't have? Just in case.
Well, I don't think in that order, cause that we.
I think that we're.
Yeah.
If we follow this new law is what we're following.
Yeah, but that, I was told that the new law really only applies to town meeting.
It doesn't mention.
And we already don't have a, have Australian ballot authority for other issues.
But of course, this is, this is a special town meeting, so I would think that it has authority for whatever meeting we're gonna call.
Yeah, we might, actually, we might not have the authority to do this.
Well, how would we know?
Monty's petition said to go to an Australian ballot for.
Need a burden of.
But just, and for elections, but didn't say anything about other special.
I've been dragging this all day, cause I knew this is.
Well, no, this is, I mean, this is good.
It was just tough to deal with those.
You know, this whole confusion of uh, I guess we should check that out, cause maybe we can't do that.
But the next problem is if the governor hasn't signed the bill yet, they're gonna not comment, it's not moving the law.
But we do have our special meeting scheduled for the twelfth, right?
We do at this point.
So, so let's find out if we can.
So let's find out, let's find out about Australian ballot.
Who wants to find out?
About whether you.
But we should find out in the next couple of days, so.
Yeah, no, we have to find out, uh, alright.
And the other thing you'll have to find out is if you do Australian ballot, or you do an absentee ballot, when it has to be postmarked by.
Well, it has to be.
Couple days after.
It has to be a few days after, it has to be in by the. It has to be a few days after. It has to be in by election day.
At the end of the day, on the election day.
I mean, that.
That's pretty clear.
I'm staying out of that one.
Mm-hmm. But soon after. I don't know what the time.
I would say that's postmarked by the day of.
By the day of is hypothetically.
Things changed a little bit last year, but.
You do your count that day of.
You do the count the day of. If it's not in.
See it the day after.
You're really not, you're really not supposed to count.
Saying is we need to clarify when it has to.
They're still working on that.
Wait, hold on. I mean, yeah, this is not like collecting taxes. I mean, everybody should know their vote has to be in by the end of election day.
Rah-hoo! So are we saying we gotta table this discussion till the next meeting?
Well, we could, we could vote.
We could do a.
On it, and then let's find out if we can do it.
Okay, let's, that's what I'm saying. Let's, let's vote on it, and if we find out it's illegal, we'll have a special meeting and fix it. Does that make it, you know, would that sound okay?
It's a good berry, you know?
So, well, let's, let's vote on what we want to do.
Okay.
And if we find that it's broken, we'll have to hold a special select board meeting to fix it.
To fix it, right.
That way we, we can fix it in the short term.
And I have a feeling that we can't do this, but, um, I don't know for sure.
And ask about the post.
Well, because my only, my logic, guys, if we, we're, it's not safe to go to the regular town meeting, why would it be safe to go?
Right.
To a special meeting. So why would they contemplate if there was another meeting, it's safe to go to that one? Doesn't make any sense.
That's, that's.
We've lost our minds, you know? Which happens.
We can have town meeting and not lose our moderator until after town meeting. Then that would be good, too.
I might have lost my mind a while ago, but.
I like that.
Alright, so let's have the motions. Sorry, sorry.
There's some comments, you have questions.
So, being a Zoom user frequently, there's an option in Zoom called Zoom polling,
Mm-hmm.
where as the administrator, if you were, like, the, the town has an account for Zoom, which you pay for. It's called Zoom Pro.
Mm-hmm.
And there's a function there called polling. So the administrator has the option for those who choose to participate by a Zoom to poll those folks.
Mm-hmm.
And vote. So that's just another way.
But here's, here's the, here's the problem. The legislature didn't provide us to do that.
Well, such thing as a hybrid meeting.
Right, because what I'm, my concern is we can't guarantee who's actually voting.
Right, who's on the checklist and who came.
Right, because is my dog voting? I mean, I'm not trying to, I'm just saying, they didn't give us that option in this law.
You would see a dog's face.
No, no, I got you.
Raising his paw.
But you could, can you see what I've just raised it up, the obvious issue is you either vote in person or you vote via Australian ballot where you've been checked off on the voter list.
But you would not penalize people who don't feel comfortable going into a meeting.
And we've already talked about how we cannot penalize anyone.
But we're not. They are. The legislature's doing that, because they didn't offer that as an option. They might change it.
It's just an option.
Yep, good point, good point.
A hybrid option has been discussed and it never.
The legislature didn't do it.
Never went anywhere.
Okay. Well, I guess it all depends on whether or not we can actually have the voting for the special town meeting by Australian ballot. That's, that's, but we can.
Or postponed.
You can't postpone.
Can't postpone.
Can't postpone a warning. Well, we can, we could, we should check into that if that's a question. Um, it can't hurt just to find out for sure.
It's gonna explode.
I know there is that one, but, you know, but I talked to that attorney today and he said.
Because I just read out of the statute.
Yeah, I know. I realize that.
It hadn't been warned, maybe.
Yeah, it hadn't warned it yet.
That's the key issue, it's been warned.
But you, JP said something today about you're still within six.
We'd have to hold it a week after the other meeting, but.
Yeah, holding it towards the end of March. It's still winter around here. It's not gonna be any different, and the pandemic will not be, will not be any different or could be worse.
Okay, so are we gonna have a motion or are we gonna move on?
Uh, no, we, we have to make a motion about the date for the
Before my head explodes.
Pre, the pre-special meeting.
I'm caught this.
Which is a Saturday before.
Saturday before.
Fifth, people that read.
Yeah, I'll give you a date here.
I think it's the fifth of February.
Fifteen.
No, it's the fifth, right?
Saturday, the twelfth.
It would be Saturday, the fifth.
Fifth, yep.
Same time?
Uh, six PM.
Well, Saturday at six PM? I would say daytime.
Yeah.
Uh, okay, yeah.
Location, you have to have a.
Town hall.
Town, town hall, yep.
That's if you approve to do the Australian ballot.
Right.
Yes.
Which you won't.
Yep. Let's just get our, our different ducks lined up here and then we can see which one gets shot down fastest. Okay. Uh, so.
We'll need a motion.
I make a motion to pursue a special town caucus on Saturday, the fifth, at ten AM to review the possibility of Australian ballot for our special town meeting at ten AM on February the twelfth.
We would have to be voting today to be changing the one on the twelfth.
Yeah, that, that's what we.
To Australian ballot. That's why we're having the caucus.
Yep, right, but we have to.
But the caucus isn't about.
Caucus isn't about.
It's not about the.
No, but we would, if we're, if we're gonna hold a regular meeting, is what I'm saying.
Right.
We don't need the caucus.
No, we don't.
So I'm saying, we would, if, if we're gonna have a caucus, we, we're voting today to change the twelfth to Australian ballot.
Right.
Yep, okay.
You don't know whether you can.
Which, the fact has no effect on that whatsoever. There's no voting.
We're not gonna worry about that. Alright, so I make a motion to approve Australian ballot for our, February the twelfth.
Special meeting.
Special meeting.
Special meeting.
There you go.
I'll, I'll second.
No, no, no.
I know, we're, we're gonna do it anyway.
We'll find out if it's illegal, we'll, we'll change.
Do we need to have, with an absentee ballot in there as well?
No, because that's what the law provides for.
The law provides.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, is there more discussion? Because we beat the hell out of it.
It goes good.
Motion approved.
Okay, uh, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay.
So, um, and then we should establish.
Set the date for the caucus for the fifth at ten o'clock.
At ten AM, in the town hall.
In the town hall.
And if we find out it's illegal, we'll fix it.
Right, and hopefully we'll know that in the next few days.
Do you want to deal with town meeting today or do you want to wait till the next meeting?
We need to have the, uh, we need to have the notice the voters approved tonight because that goes in the, um.
Nice, that's my question. Do you find out in the next couple of days whether or not that is gonna be Australian ballot? Can you throw something up on your website or something?
Sure.
Yep.
We'll be sending cards out once we realize it's legal.
Yes, we're gonna do this as fast as we can. Skip had.
You're gonna, you're gonna check on that.
I'm gonna check on it. I'm gonna need some help, but I'm gonna check on it. So Skip had a question, too.
Yeah. Hold on, the same line as Monty. Once it's decided what you're gonna do, excuse me, on the fifth, let me know and I can post it on the.
Yeah, because the fifth will just be a caucus. There's no voting.
There's no voting, so. And so let's have, let's kind of clarify our plan B. If we can't do Australian ballot, then
It will be a regular town meeting.
Town meeting.
And you have to be there to vote.
Yep, and it'll be in the school gym as it's been warned, um, and people have to be there to vote.
And you're gonna have to do something about a moderator.
Potentially.
Potentially, yeah. Unless our moderator can be there, uh, remotely. Which would be kind of weird, but, but these are weird times.
I would do it, except I'm not gonna be there that day.
Alright. I can tell you right now that I do not want to be the moderator, so.
I got pretty thick skin, but I just won't be there.
I, I.
I could try if, if necessary.
They shouldn't be mad at the moderator.
No, it's, it's pretty, it should be just.
Pretty straightforward thing.
Just, just gonna be familiar with Robert's rules.
Yes, and know Robert's rules of order, which I said I gladly do it, but I'm not gonna be here, I'll be out.
I don't know Robert's rules.
Okay, we'll, we'll, we'll figure that part out.
We can give you a Robert's rules course.
Okay. Let's see if Steve would be there first.
We'll give Steve an N ninety-five. He'll be fine. I've been in plenty of COVID environments with my N ninety-five and goggles. I'm still here. Been in COVID up to my eyeballs for good.
Okay.
Alright, do we want to deal with town meeting today?
Yeah, we have to.
So I'll entertain a motion for town meeting and we'll set a caucus, well, the, the motion, at least, set the caucus date, but we'll.
And whether or not the pre-town meeting is going to be open or, uh, Zoom like we did last year.
We can do Zoom. We're fine with that. We could do either.
I think we should do, we could do both, do both.
Yeah, if you can have it live, meeting and Zoom, that's one time of that, but.
Yep.
Long as you're not voting.
Yep.
Who says all that up?
Uh.
Not me.
I, that's part of the agenda tonight for us to discuss, so. I, I have been talking to some people about that.
I've said it, but it won't work.
It's too bad. I meant to ask David how, um, Hardwick is doing it, because I know they're doing kind of a mix of.
Maybe it's simpler than we're making.
Actually, I know how, I know how Hardwick's doing it and, um.
They already have Australian ballots.
Yeah, but, and they also, their select board meetings are, there's, uh, some select board members are there remotely and others are there in person, um, and uh, HCTV basically has set them up to do that.
So this is, I think I sent you my email, but I need to print it all out.
Thank you.
This is the, the notice that will go in the town report by Thursday this week. Either, um, this is what I had drafted, based on what you talked about last week about having a open meeting for the pre-town meeting, or that other stuff that's in gray, that
Right.
the Zoom information that was last year.
Now, this one says we're mailing out ballots. We aren't doing that, are we?
We can add the ballot.
At the top.
Ballots will be mailed to all registered voters by.
Oh, yeah, okay.
We gotta take all that out. No mail-in ballot.
No.
Ballot, oh, okay. Alright. You're right, yeah.
Gonna request a, a absentee ballot.
Alright.
I'm speaking for me. I don't want to speak for you.
I still don't know about the school.
We already agreed that we can't do that.
And they didn't actually offer that in the law.
Plus the state's not reimbursing us the change, which we can't, yeah, so we can't afford it in the first place.
Yeah, darn. So I will entertain a motion.
And then.
So, yes, I'm not.
The only question here is to whether or not it's gonna be uh, ten AM on Saturday for people who wish to discuss items.
That's what we had mentioned.
That's what we had talked about.
I did put in the ten AM.
Why don't, why don't you let us make our decisions on all that, Diana, and then we'll, and then we'll.
Then we'll write this.
We haven't quite done that yet. So my understanding is, is that, um, the pre-town meeting will be on the Saturday before town meeting day.
That's what's proposed here.
The fifth, right.
Well, no, this is for the town meetings, it'll be the twenty-sixth. So we'll be there the fifth, we'll be voting the second, we'll be there every weekend in February.
Basically.
We'll be into our voting.
Yep. So that would be the Saturday before town meeting day, which is March something or other.
March twenty, or February twenty-sixth.
February twenty-sixth.
Because the first is the town meeting vote.
Okay, alright, so it would be the pre-town meeting and then town meeting will basically be going and voting or bringing in your ballot.
Right.
Essentially.
Well, you won't be bringing one in, because you'll have to get one at the meeting or
Mm-hmm.
mail it in from
Right.
your absentee ballot.
Have you made the decision on what that mail-in ballot has to be postmarked by?
Well, I would say it has to be in hand the day of the voting.
Of course.
Yeah.
It has to, you have to have it available for the.
Because it's gonna, vote's gonna be counted that night, so if it's not there when they count.
Doesn't count. I guess, you know, it would be whatever state law is, if it was postmarked on the day.
I think that's what you're gonna find. It has to.
I don't know what the, I don't think that's right.
The countings are due at the end of.
Right, every other absentee town or, or, uh, Australian ballot town that I know of, the, the count is that night at seven or whenever the poll closes. I've never seen one.
Possible question is, if some, like, last year we had a problem. Somebody tried to put a ballot in the drop box at the town office and everybody was up here and they were mad because the drop box was closed.
Right, well, this is the reason we got away from the mail-in ballots, because it's so complicated.
So what about somebody who's. So what about somebody who's?
Because it's really easy with absentee ballots. You send it in and you get it back.
In the army or in the services somewhere overseas?
Get a copy.
They can get an absentee ballot.
I can request.
Okay.
They just have to make sure it gets mailed in to be here by the first.
Okay, so we need to make sure the postcard goes out plenty early so that anybody in that situation.
Because I know this date's being dealt with all over the country is because of the fiasco last year.
And just hopefully the US Postal Service moves the mail-in.
If they don't, there's a likelihood if you wait to the last minute, your vote will get counted.
Where you drop those off?
Because this very issue is the whole crux of last year's fandango. So they're solving that, but I think the easiest is if it's not in hand when they're counting.
So we've agreed that there'll be a pre-town meeting on Saturday, whatever the date is.
26th.
February 26th.
Okay, at 10:00.
10:00 AM.
All right. And there'll be, there will be a remote access available for people that don't want to come in person. And the Town Meeting Day, the decisions will be made by Australian ballot.
We gotta vote on that.
Yep. No, we hadn't yet. So we don't really need to vote on the pre-town meeting day, I don't think.
Nope, nope.
So I'll make, I'll make a motion that for this year's 2022 Town Meeting Day, that all decisions that are on the town warning will be voted by Australian ballot. Second motion?
We have a second. Any more discussion?
So it's not just budgetary, it's?
All the articles.
Everything.
Okay, okay. Did you change your, did you change your motion to articles, Michael?
Okay, sure.
Articles, yeah.
Yeah, I don't even know what I said.
Excellent.
So, okay. Diana, do you want me to restate that motion, or is that just?
No, you just put articles in there. Okay, thank you.
This could be a separate motion, but whether or not to mail ballots or mail postcards.
We're, yeah, add it to your motion. We will not.
Okay, well, we'll mail postcards.
We're just mailing postcards.
Let's, let's do a separate.
Okay, just do a separate, okay. Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, so I'll make a motion that we not mail ballots to every registered voter in town. Rather, we mail postcards, letting them know.
To pick up a ballot.
To pick up a ballot.
Well, they can request an absentee ballot through the process.
Through the mail, or they can pick one up, or they can come on Town Meeting Day and vote in the building if they want.
Right.
Okay.
Which last year about half people did, even though all their money was spent to keep people away from each other, but half.
We lived dangerously. All right, any discussion on that motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose.
All right.
And we'll find out if you leave.
Then we're gonna find out what's done, everything wrong.
I think it's okay. Remember, move forward in ignorant bliss.
So Diana, are you, are you willing to explore whether or not the special town meeting can be?
I think Chris was gonna do that.
Chris gonna do that idea. Thank God, Chris.
I might need, I might need a little bit of help, but.
What?
I might need a little bit of help.
With what?
Just pursuing whether or not we can actually do this.
With the special town meeting.
With the special town meeting.
I'll send you the email that I got from the Secretary of State Office.
Because I'd like them just to quote the statute, because I've gotten that information before.
I'll just, I'll start out, but I'd like some clarity, so.
Just if they're gonna make a comment, when you get it, ask them to give us the statute where they get this from.
I'll be in the office tomorrow.
Correct. I wanna see the statute, because I don't care about their opinion if, because what I read out of the statute, it says you can't do it.
Thanks, Mr. Diana.
I just don't want to run amok, that's all. Okay. I think we've done logistics and we've done voting. We did all that, so.
I think, I think we've covered.
Select board meetings, remote access.
Okay, so I actually attended a meeting last week. The HC, I'm on the HCTV board, and we had a meeting where there were people in person, and there were also people there by Zoom, which is what Hardwick Select Board is doing now. And Leif Goldberg showed me the setup, and it does appear to be working for Hardwick. It worked fine for, for the meeting that I was at. And it's basically, the setup is, and Jim, who is also on the board at HCTV and has been doing the filming for us, is much familiar with it too, is that there's a camera, a web camera, but basically a camera that's plugged into a laptop, and there is, there are mics like we see here that are plugged into, what do you call that when you can put a bunch of mics in, you can control the volumes?
Mixing board or something?
Mixing board, thank you. That's the word I was looking for.
Oh, pretty impressive.
You wanna do it? Open your mouth again.
That's what the mask, it wasn't me.
So it's all, it's, of course, it gets somewhat unwieldy when there are a lot of people, but for, like, for the number of people that are here tonight, or the number of people that were, have been here the last few meetings, it would work. And it would require buying a camera, buying some mics. The mixing board may not be necessary, or and that's pretty much, and Leif Goldberg is willing to.
Do we still have to have a physical location?
Yes.
Because we, okay.
Yes. We, the reason, and until there's an emergency.
Right, okay.
We have to provide a physical location.
But it sounded to me like, according to open meeting law, only one person.
Correct, right.
Committee or board has to be there. The rest, you still need a quorum.
I just wanted to make sure I thought that was the key.
You still need a quorum, though, but someone can be, but the, but the public would still be allowed to attend in person.
That's why you gotta, again, you're back to that.
You have to have a physical space.
Stuff.
Right, have to have a physical space. There's that, the Regional Planning Commission, their meetings, they have one of these OWLS, and, you know, so they, they have to have an in-person person there. Usually, it's the receptionist, and there's, for all the meetings that I've attended, no one else is there except her, but there is the option for somebody to come in and be there in person if they wanted, and then everybody else is on, on Zoom.
And no actual committee member or board member needs to be there, just somebody needs to be there.
Somebody needs to be there. Yep, yep. So, you know, I talked to Leif about this, and I asked him if he would be willing to provide us with what the town would need for camera, microphones, et cetera, and if he would kind of, basically, I offered to hire him, or I told him that I would talk to the select board about this, that we hire him as a consultant to set us up so that we're able to provide remote access.
To the meetings.
For meetings. Any meeting. And this would be select board, it could be planning commission, could be the ARPA committee, you know, anybody who, you know, so that people would have both the remote option and the in-person option.
How quickly could you get that put together, though?
It would be, as soon as we had the equipment that we needed.
Well, we gotta get the cost so we can approve buying it, right?
The cost would be pretty minimal. It would be probably less than the $600 that we spent on the digital projector. I could, I could get some costs from him pretty quickly.
Just approve buying it. That's, I don't.
Could you, could you be reimbursed retroactively from the ARPA funds for this? Because it sounds very.
I'm hoping that that.
Sounds very ARPA-esque.
It is ARPA-esque. It is ARPA-esque.
Yeah, yeah.
That's one thing, it's really ARPA.
Yeah, that's my assumption, that whatever we spend can be used, the ARPA funds could be used for it. Makes perfect sense.
It seems like the wave of the future, so it seems like we gotta do it. When COVID goes away someday, whatever it turns into, I think it's a good idea.
And, and Michael, would people access the meeting through Zoom?
Zoom.
Okay.
Yeah, just using our town account.
Yeah, it would be the goal.
And that one camera would essentially serve to broadcast from.
Just kind of garnering, for people in the room.
The idea is that it sort of tunes to.
Yeah, it kinda looks at whoever's talking.
Well, that's, that's what the OWL camera does.
The OWL looks at you.
And we could purchase one of those. That's a little, those are around $1,000. So what Leif was mentioning was just a simple web camera that would have, you know, you could, I know, my wife Ellie has one for some of the remote teaching that she does. It can be wide angle, it can narrow, you know, you can, kind of like a camera where you, that has a zoom lens or something. That might work. I mean, the OWL thing is, is interesting. There are towns that are using it, and it does, it's kind of there, and if, like Stephen, if you started talking and it was over, Monty had just finished, as soon as you start talking, it's gonna move over to you. So somehow, it senses who's talking.
That you're saying the right thing at this point.
And I guess it sort of, it sort of looks like an OWL. That's why they call it an OWL. But, and we could go that route.
What's the difference in price with that, just a static camera, because?
They're like 300 and something bucks.
A static camera is actually probably less than that, but, yeah. Around $100. Depends on the quality. Seven or eight hundred dollars worth of difference.
And you, it seems to me you could just easily stage a room, any, any room that's regularly used.
Right up there.
And then all boards and the public would know that this is how we form a meeting. Personally, I'm opposed to gadgets with moving parts.
It creeps you out.
That fixed camera.
No, he sees it as something that's gonna break.
Yeah, true, right, it'll wear out sooner.
You should see my collection of hand tools.
Oh, hand tools are great.
No motors.
Don't get him started. The OWL records as well as, obviously, it's recording what the people say.
Yeah, and Zoom, Zoom would also have.
Digitally.
Right. In fact, if it's, if it's a public meeting, we have, we're using both options, we have to record it.
So for me, I'm good with it. We just need a price so we can approve our expenditure.
All right. So I, I'm trying to think of how we can move quickly on this so that we could actually have the equipment. We, I will check with Leif. We might be able to borrow the equipment for one night.
And then we could get the quote by the next meeting.
Yeah, and Leif could get us the quote really quickly. I could have that in a couple of days, but obviously, we would have to make the approval for the expenditure at our next select board meeting.
Right, or a warrant, especially.
Or a warrant, or a warrant, a special meeting, right?
So I'm good with either.
Okay, all right. So I'll, I'll get back in touch with Leif. I'll come up with a money amount, and.
Where does unbudgeted stuff like that come out?
Well, we'll find a place.
We'll have to steal it from somewhere. We're not stealing, we're borrowing.
It'll, it'll come from the general fund, whether we put it, we'll find, I mean, any ideas of where we could put this. Where did we put the digital projector under?
It's, it's the.
Equipment.
Equipment.
It's a reallocation of an existing resource.
Bicycle signs.
It's like any budget, a spending plan, you don't always follow it to the T. You might save a few bucks on something, you can spend it on something.
But the select board can approve expenditure of the ARPA money on the OWL.
Right, but we need a number.
It's $1,000 off Amazon.
Yep.
I've already, yeah, I have the backup to it. It could be here within 10 days. Yeah, I think that's a good point, because we don't, it doesn't need to come through the ARPA committee.
No, we can approve it. I just don't know what the budget is. I don't want to give them $1,000. I need 1,500. See what I'm saying?
Well, let's see what Leif can come up with, because we would still, we would still.
We'd still have to direct it. I mean, it, it lasts, correct?
Well, you're gonna need a camera, you're gonna need a microphone, you're gonna need speakers. You're gonna need all that stuff.
Right, yeah.
And a computer, and.
Yeah, that's the other thing I did.
And ideally, if we ever got the town hall renovated and warmed up, you'd want this equipment to be able to be moved.
Right.
And installed in there permanently so you could use it easily.
With the OWL, this is a really silly question, but do you need to be in a circle? Like, does it have to be in the middle and it's howling around?
No, it does a 360-degree thing.
Yeah, so you could just set it and it would kind of.
So it could just sweep this way?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It does have speakers.
Yep.
It does. Yeah, I don't know anything about this stuff, so I'm, I'm not a good person to decide.
You could have one here by the 17.
Yeah. And both, then we have.
And I'm okay if you want to throw a number out there and stay under it.
$974.
We'd have to figure out how to make the thing work to.
You'd have to be warned to, to borrow.
Yeah, it's true. We can't, it's, we can't do a money thing because we didn't put it on the. Well, we, we will endanger it one more meeting. It's all, we're really, it's not that big a deal. I think just get a budget and have it for the next meeting.
All right.
I think, like you said, Leif would lend you the equipment if you needed it.
I think, yeah, if, if they weren't using it elsewhere on the particular night that we meet, yeah.
It sounds like, from what I'm hearing, you guys say there's a lot of meetings coming up that could be used.
Yeah.
Yeah, every, every meeting.
Yeah, because what's important to me is equipment is, is where something we, if we install it here temporarily, we can be moved, because I'd like to see us get a camera as part of this deal to play when we're having meetings, you could put stuff on the wall. I'd like to see a whole, like, if we're gonna spend ARPA money, which is a great idea, we set the building up with speakers and, and a camera and microphone and a, you know.
My thought with the, with the lighting in this room is to get an electrician to come in and fix it so that maybe each of these rows was on a switch, so that, the thing now is that, you know, the projector projects over to there, or anywhere in this room that it projects. There's so much light.
Yeah.
That you can't see it. So if, if, if we were to use a projector, let's say because the screen's there, it was projecting there, and we could shut off these two rows of lights and just have that back one on, it probably would be a lot easier to see what's up there. That's why, you know, we haven't really, you know, we got the digital projector so that these different things on paper that we're looking at, everybody could see what we were talking about. But with the lights on, this time of year, of course, we don't have a choice, could either turn them all off and just see the screen and not really be able to see each other.
And have to listen to the snoring.
So that's another, and we could probably use the ARPA money for that, too. I don't know.
Right. So that's what I'm saying, if we do, I'd hate to rush it and kind of get it half, halfway. If it takes a couple weeks, let's get it right. But I'd like it to be relocatable, so if we do end up, the town hall's a better location because we own it.
Right.
It's easy for us to use. I'd like to see it end up there eventually.
Yep, yep.
As part of our sprucing up.
Well, I'll, I'll check in with Leif, and he can give us an amount for just a simple camera, and, and then we could go, you know, I'm fine with going with the OWL camera. I think it might be good to check in with some towns that are using it, because I did hear that there were some complications with it when it first started being used, but I'm sure they've figured all of that out now. We would have to have somebody who could figure out how to get it all set up, but, anyway.
I'll put it down for next meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. ARPA.
So.
Yeah.
Good.
Hello. Well, here.
I trust everybody got the email I sent? Did you all get the email I sent? Am I on the right path?
That was great. That was great.
Okay. I just didn't want to speak for these guys. I hadn't heard from them, so.
No, I, I.
Do you think I'm on the right path with that?
The biggest thing I took away from that email was take your time. Take your time, but get your stuff together.
Yeah.
It's like we have to hurry up and wait. But here, it says review select board's intentions. So what are your intentions for us?
But I, I put that on the agenda. Basically, it was to address the email that Paul sent out, for one.
Because I've laid mine out.
Which was what, for the rest of us?
Okay, I can read that if you'd like. So here are, here are the board's priorities, and this is Paul's email.
And it says on the end, if you guys disagree, please weigh in. I wasn't trying to set everybody's opinion.
Right, yeah. Find items that are clear and will not be rejected during an audit, and we have to pay it back. That's the issue of, you know, the FEMA not really approving these things before the expenditure, but approving them afterwards, and if they don't approve of something, then you, the town basically has to pay for it out of their own funds. So, and the second item that Paul put on is pretty similar. Find items that are very clear in the guidance and will have a positive impact on Woodbury residents. Three, support local organizations that have lost funding or have been and continue to be impacted by the ongoing pandemic, particularly organizations that are not being funded by other portions of the national funding bills. And four, getting the town set up to do remote meetings moving forward.
Good one.
So, and Paul mentions that he believes that the first-year funds will be exhausted fulfilling the above needs, and then if any other board members disagree, please weigh in. So I didn't disagree with any of these. And, you know, I think our intention in, in having the committee was to have someone other than the select board to, you know, receive the different submissions and kind of organize them, and then bring them to us for a discussion, and then, and then our final approval. I, some of the things that I would like to see with the ARPA committee is just a better warning of the meetings that you have, and I'm glad to help with that. You know, I have, you know, we all have experience, and I think Robin or Brandy could help, too, and just the different places that people look for notices from the town. You know, the website, Front Porch Forum, the postings, physical postings in, in town. There is this other, the Woodbury Connections that a lot of people use. That's an okay place, too. Any, any place where, you know, and as many places as, you know, we can do. It's still not perfect, but that's, that's what we've been doing for all. And then, you know, like, the event when we were trying to, and I would encourage you to use the two people from VLCT and the Central of Mount Regional Planning Commission. They, you know, they, they are up to their eyeballs in this, and they've been designated by the state to advise.
To help out.
Different towns. I've been trying to get some answers about the March 1st deadline, and I was, you know, contacting Katie Buckley at VLCT, and she just mentioned, and I think I sent this out to everybody, and you probably got it also, is that apparently the final FEMA, or not FEMA, but the final rule, the final word on this whole thing has finally been formalized.
Yeah.
And so Katie mentioned that she was spending the whole day on Friday, which was when I first tried to get a hold of her, just doing nothing but meetings about this final rule. And, you know, and then she did respond to me briefly in an email, and I had a couple other questions about that March 1st date, and I didn't hear anything back from her today, so I assume that she's still kind of up to her eyeballs and trying to figure that thing out, so that they, you know, have that knowledge.
Is that the one you printed out today, Brandy?
It is. It's around 440 pages. There's a hard copy if you guys want. Read that, Sam.
Yeah, it's a light, it's light federal reading, it's no problem. There's probably a form you have to fill out before you can read it.
So, you know, I would definitely encourage you guys to, to use them anytime you have a, a question. And then, you know, for this big, like, another, you know, we were just spending, babbling on about in-person town meetings and all, you know, to try to have an informational meeting where people can come, you know, we don't have to do that right off. Maybe it would be better to wait. You know, it would be nice to have it when we can, but I'm just wondering how many people would feel safe coming. So, and again, and posting that, it's, you know, again, use, use the town office, use the select board to help you with, you know, just getting the word out to people, you know, making the arrangements with the school, or, when it's at the town hall, it's, it's easy because it's just the town. You could just set a, set a date.
But we would try a lot at that, because you might have seen that we posted out our initial January 4th date in all the places that you recommended, but we decided to postpone it because we got such a response from the community saying, you know, I'd like to go, including the speakers, wanted to go but didn't, wanted to attend but didn't want to go because of COVID. So, so then we postponed it in all those locations, but we're, yep.
Is that kind of meeting with those, with the people from VLCT and?
Yeah, both.
Are they going to happen again?
Yeah.
By Zoom or what?
We would like it to, yes, for sure.
Yeah, so we'll have to get our Zoomers going.
Is that March 1 deadline that you mentioned?
Well, the March, I think it is, it's a reporting thing, and I didn't get all of my questions answered, but where was the answer here that I got? Yeah, NEU, which is, which Woodbury is, I forget what NEU stands for, but it's basically municipalities. The reporting remains the same, that on, due by April 30th, 2022, there's a project, an expenditure reporting that's due, so.
We haven't done anything.
We haven't done anything.
Be careful with federal stuff. You may still have to file a report saying you didn't do anything.
I still do. There's a login. I had to set up a credential.
Because I ran afoul of that at the fire department once. I found out for three years I had to file sub-recipient reports that said I didn't do anything.
So it, it isn't like we have to have everything decided by March 1st. We can just report that.
You didn't do anything.
Whatever, you know.
I was gonna warn you about that one.
Oh, no. So our committee kind of jumped on the train, and things from, if I look back at the email.
It was moving when we all did it.
It started to move like late summer, and we didn't really get on the train until November, December, right at the holidays.
Right, so what happened with us?
We're super excited and, and with, with Heather at the, at the chair to start to dig into this, but now that the holidays are over, it's nice to know that that March[1763.36] it's nice to know that that March 1st date was
Right.
not a real date that we needed to attend to, because we were handed a bunch of very important dates that we didn't know what the significance of that was.
Because the sad
So that was one of my questions for you today.
The sad part with all of us is the train was moving, and we, like, we got the check, and we didn't even have the guidance yet. For us, I mean, so we're, this thing was like, Brandy's like, oh, we have a check, and I was like, well, here's the incomplete guidance and
Yeah. Yeah, good, so we're, we're glad to hear that there's time.
There's all, all kinds of time.
We have a big group of people, and I feel like we're ready to, our next meeting is tomorrow night.
It is tomorrow night in this space at 6 o'clock.
Okay.
I've already got it set up with John to get a key and to get in and access and all that stuff.
Because, because if you've got stuff you can fund that's really clear, you don't necessarily have to wait and wait and wait on, is what I'm getting at with what I, because there are
We need to wait for the application.
Correct, you don't have an application, you can't fund it.
So that's going to be finalized tomorrow.
Correct.
That's going to be our first thing to do tomorrow is to get that finalized and see as many people as possible. What's that? The application form? Yes, yes, that's right.
Because they were going to make one.
And I think we're going to talk a little bit about sort of how to work the deadline, because if there's things that want to, we want to be able to approve, or you guys want to be able to approve that are low-hanging fruit right away, how do you give people a deadline and also indicate to them that there's no rush? You know what I mean?
Well, yeah.
You have the deadline, but you have two years.
Because, because my fear is there are things like PPE for, we're in, we're still going to COVID houses at the fire department treating, and we're running, burning through PPE. So you hate to, like, oh, we got the check in August, but you were out of money, and, you know what I'm saying, that's, I just don't want to, it's going to end up like that.
Yeah. So again, we only have the first installment of 131,000.
You get another installment next September, I think.
Yeah.
It's July.
July, okay.
It's 1,000, 131,975 dollars and 84 cents. You're getting two installments of that, so you don't even, you only have half.
131,952.
It's 260 something.
The second half is for the fiscal year that, the next fiscal year, FY '23, yeah. Or 20, yeah.
Play 131, did you say?
131, 131.
Because ultimately, we're looking for your recommendations, then we would have to approve them.
Yeah. So
Yeah.
And I know there are different groups, town committees or whatever, that are, have been talking about things that might be eligible, so when that application is, form is ready, I'm, I'm sure you'll be getting some submissions, yeah.
Would it be an opportunity to find out whether a project might be eligible before going to the work of figuring out the, the planning of the project and how much it might cost?
Well, yeah.
That could
Yeah, no, I'm not really sure what, okay.
What we're trying, what, I think what our goals as a group have been to want, you know, connect the townspeople with the information about ARPA, so that people feel informed. Connect them with the experts and have a meeting with them, and then also think about ways that people can reach us that, that can't make it to a meeting. You know, do, do we have a running email answer, question-answer thing, or do we send out a survey, or how we're this is something the group needs to figure out. I love throwing ideas out there.
Well, one, one thing that I think could be an issue for you and us, too, is that you're probably going to get more requests than funds that you have, and that's where that priority list
Yep.
becomes important. You're going to fully fund maybe a high priority one, but not a priority five.
Yeah, and, and knowing that ARPA really doesn't want
That'd be my thought when it comes to this table.
You don't want someone coming to us and saying we want to start a library, you know, I mean, the obvious thing is that you're not, you don't want to, you want groups together.
Because some things are just so far down the list, we're just going to run out of money before you get there.
Yeah. And then we want to know what the priorities of our people in town, you know, we want them to understand ARPA, and then we want to hear a little bit about what do people want? What are people looking for?
But it's also the priorities of the grant.
Right.
Body, theirs is what's important.
Yeah, 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 it need, those two things.
That's the ugly one. Every time I get to a grant, it's like, I want this, and they go, well, we only pay for that. Oh, that's all you get to apply for.
So that comes in the first educating people, you know, don't, don't, try not to put in an applicant. And also having on the application, where do you think your bet balls under?
Because that would be important, because when I'm reviewing, I'd like to see, well, where do they think it?
Where do they think it's going to fall?
Or you think, however you're going to do that, I don't care, it's just
I want, I want people to think about it before they go to that application.
I don't even see it on the guidance here.
So then is there going to be another line where, let's say I think it should be under Section C, but when the committee looks at it, they say, no, that should be Section F?
Could be.
It's a, it's a
And then we might get it and call it Section D.
Yeah.
That's why this is hard. Well, the, the high priority items aren't that difficult. It's some of the other, some of the items are going to be difficult.
Some things will be totally clear.
Some things are, like buying PPE. That's like a simple, replacing funds that were lost because you couldn't fundraise, for example, for an organization. It's really clear. Easy, do it.
So, right, so the PPE, the library hasn't
Because the library last Monday, the BTO or whatever they call the organization, there's a whole bunch of organizations that couldn't fund.
I know the list that Chance sent us, being those where, those all seem very valid.
Yeah.
Those are good points.
May run out of money before you get to the end of the
As soon as we tomorrow get that application finalized, I think the first step is to send it to Skip and get it up on the website.
Okay.
Get it out and about, and then immediately call back Katie, and well, once we figure out the Zoom connection and how to get people remotely involved, is to call Katie and the VLCT people back and have a town-wide meeting. Preferably, I think, maybe before town meeting, just so that people before March 1st and before, and like as soon as possible.
Yeah, we've got a lot of stuff going on before town meeting.
Yeah.
It's going to be a long time to do it.
Get it quick.
Yeah.
The other issue that I know that had come up is committee members, and I think it was our intention that the committee is, as we've appointed it. So if you want to put more members, they need to be brought before the board.
Before.
Whoever's not on it right now is not on it, unless the brides bring them to the board, because again, you don't need a 14-person committee, I don't think.
No, because we'll never get anything.
Just becomes unwieldy, so we're thinking five to seven people.
Yeah.
Anyone disagree with that? I don't want to speak to the whole board.
I, I think, you know, I think at the ARPA committee, if there was somebody interested and, and the committee was okay with it and they came to us
Right, they need to bring it to us.
to recommend that we appoint someone that I would be okay with doing that.
Yeah, I just want, I don't want to end up with 15, right, because then it's impossible to do anything.
Well, yeah, I mean, the point, too, that you're so far in that we would want to have to
Right, to add.
Somebody, but we do have
I mean, they're public meetings.
One person that might be interested in joining that would be an asset to us, I think.
Because they're public meetings, so if someone wants to come participate in the meeting, they're welcome to do that.
Exactly.
They just aren't one of the voting members or whoever you're doing it. And we just wanted to stay out of your process too much, so, right, I mean
No, it was the goal.
Or we can do it, that's why it's better, that, that way it kind of separates the
It was a separate committee.
the approvers from the proposers.
And, you know, I think in any other proposals, if there's just a question on the committee as well, you know, that's, again, that's who the Katie and Grace Vincent, that's what, that's their job to, to help guide us, so so definitely use, use them.
I was told today and informed by our, Skip Marcasani, who's our IT guy, that the ARPA email that's on my computer cannot be on there.
Okay.
So if one of you wants to take control of the email, but it has to be deleted in order for my email to talk with my laptop that I have to work from home, I can't have two different emails on there, Gmail and the town email.
Is that where that ARPA email was going to, to you? I was wondering.
Chance, Chance set it up on my computer.
Oh, interesting, okay.
So
Yeah, that would be great for us to have, because then we could give it to people to ask questions.
They were to get a public records request, they're not honing out your computer for you. Don't ask me why, I know when that happens.
How do we transfer that?
So I can give you the login, well, Chance set it up, so I will get the backup on that.
It's just a Google, it's just a Gmail.
It's a Gmail with a password.
So all you got to do is get the, the email and the password, and you own it.
And then I'll disconnect it from the town.
She can just unhook it from her computer.
Because it's got to come off in order for me to get it, yeah.
It's just a Gmail account, so all you need is the info, and it can be yours.
Perfect.
Yeah, I think most of our questions have been answered. We, if you, your email was helpful, and then also, we just had some questions about, because we were joining, jumping on the train in mid-track, we didn't know about some of these dates, and that's what else.
We didn't either. I heard the dates, like, I don't know.
But those dates are strictly for me as, as the
Right, the reporting dates.
That I have
For sub-recipient reports, or whatever they call them.
And those pop up on my login
Yeah.
that I had to agree to.
Okay, are they quarterly reports? That's what I assumed.
Yeah, just say no activity.
Yeah, basically.
So we used to get those emails if you don't have the Gmail account? Yeah, it comes straight to my treasures.
Treasures, you know.
The ARPA is just for the committee, where it's convenient when I get stuff from VLCT just to send it over to ARPA that way, and then it can flow to the board, but that's easy enough if, if Heather has it in hand, I can just bounce it to Heather, and then she can forward it. But I do have documents at the town office. We can print out, you know, 440 pages of
No, no.
Better, no, it's better to have it on your computer.
I have one hard copy if
Let's not kill the trees.
the board wants to take it and review it.
Let, let the people at VLCT and the Regional Planning Commission worry about figuring that out.
Right, are we good with ARPA?
Yeah, it's exciting work.
Thank you all for your work.
Yeah, thank you for doing that work.
Sorry, it was a mess, but it was a mess, and we got it, so
But now we have a final rule.
We finally have a final rule, months and months after we get the money, so don't be scared.
Only before 39 days of it.
Yeah, go through it and let me know, just a little light reading for tonight.
Can I, could, could it be possible for future ARPA presentations at the, for the select board that we do it closer to the beginning of the meeting?
As, as interesting as the select meeting are, how can
Yeah, this kind of got put on at the end, and I looked, boy, where am I going to put that in? Do I have to change all of this?
I really did find it interesting.
I had a full head of hair when I took this in.
That's why the Harvard Town Manager was first, so he wouldn't have to sit through all of it. But, yes, we'll, we'll get you earlier in Before all the boring stuff. Okay. No, it was good.
I thought it was a really interesting discussion, actually.
I agree.
The, the town meeting stuff is.
Yeah.
Okay. So follow-ups, updates, and other business.
So I just wanted to give a quick update on the zoning notices of violation, and I have forwarded emails that Bob has been sending to me, so sounds like he's, everything, oh, Monty left too quick, but, and Mike did, too, too bad. But anyway, it sounds like he's on it.
He's on it, I saw that, and it's been vetting, vetting it by the lawyer.
Yeah, yeah, so, and apparently he has, the, the lawyer has vetted the notices.
It sounds like we may be needing to move with a health order.
Yes.
Potentially, so is the fellow that did it before willing to work with us?
I can make that call. There's also a person at the Health Department that has, is able to advise.
If we need to do it, I'd like to do it, I just don't have time to do it.
And with Mike, with the statement that there, people are running their sewage through a pipe directly
It sounds like emergency health order territory to me.
And what the Health Department told me earlier is that if anything is transgressing beyond the property lines
Right.
then they will get involved, so
Right, so we need to do that.
If that were actually true, of course, we have to
We'd have to get a search warrant to go look.
So I, I know the people to call to check in with that, so I'll take, I'll take that one on.
Yeah, because if we, if, if we need to do emergency help, or I just need to get someone who can do that, I think we just need to do it.
Yeah. And whether Jake Hopping would actually help do that.
Of course he would.
Or advise.
The state guy is supposed to step in when the town doesn't have the capacity.
No.
No. This has been a battle royale. They keep pushing it down to this town, and the town doesn't have the resources, and the state won't touch it.
And to be honest with you, the state guy doesn't do a whole lot either.
Yeah, they don't do anything, and then it ends up on our table.
But anyway, let's see, where to start?
The state of Vermont.
And so that, that's pretty much it on the, is there, anybody have any other?
Diana.
I have a little update on FEMA. We signed that application to expunge that wastewater permit, and that got approved. And the one thing I'm still waiting for is for Chance to sign the boundary line agreement.
Okay.
So if you want to mention that to him again.
Have you called him and reached out to him?
Well, not, I don't bug him, but
Oh, okay, I wasn't aware, okay.
He knows this way, he, he had some problem figuring out what, what was what, but
All right.
It's just, it's not a boundary line adjustment, it's just an agreement of where the